Welcome to the October ninth, twenty twenty-three Tualton City Council meeting. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, some folks were off today, some weren't. Uh, we were the folks who weren't off today. So happy to be here tonight. Uh, go ahead and call this meeting order. Tonight we have some special attendees. Uh, members of our veterans group here in Tualton are gonna lead the Pledge of Allegiance. And also tell us a little about their event coming up, the Veterans Breakfast on November ninth. So gentlemen, over to you.
Tom Lynn Schaubert, Air Force.
Tony Rizzuto, Marine Corps.
Ben Richardson, US Navy.
Welcome. Uh, so with that, uh, go ahead, everyone, stand and our veterans will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But hopefully Dale gave you all the details. Can you tell us a little bit about the Veterans Breakfast that's gonna be on November ninth?
Yeah, we're here just to let you know that it's gonna happen.
Okay. Where is it? What time? Who's invited?
It's gonna be at the, uh, Tualton, uh, Juanita Poll Center. And it's on November ninth. I don't know what time it was. Nine? I think nine o'clock.
Yep, nine to ten thirty.
Been very well attended in the past years, and we're expecting a good attendance this year also.
Right, and veterans are free?
The veterans are free.
And then family members are?
You have to call the Juanita Poll Center and sign up.
Yep, so make sure to go to the city website to pre-register at the Poll Center. Uh, usually it's, it's in the hundreds. I know that. Usually it's elbow to elbow every year.
If there's vets out there, they need to come because it's, it's really top-notch. They put on a really good program. And, uh, uh, I, I just can't recommend it enough just to get to, to know some other veterans and shake some hands and see some people that really, have really sacrificed a lot.
Yeah, I'm, hopefully the, there's several veterans that we see year to year that are, you know, a hundred plus now. Um, I've a couple that they come into, their last year, I don't think they made it the year before because there was transportation issues. Um, because obviously some of these gentlemen and women aren't driving. Uh, but their care facility was driving them in previous years. So it'd be great to see them again and the folks, yeah, a hundred plus years old and with their pictures of them as young servicemen was amazing, so. But, uh, I'll be there. I'm hoping a lot of city councillors will be there. It's a good breakfast. Um, you get to hear some really good speakers and, uh, at the end of the breakfast are some great giveaways. Uh, the businesses in the community really, uh, donate a lot of good stuff. And, uh, so you wanna be there and enjoy it. Uh, anything else I missed?
You did good.
All right.
Well, thank you for your service, Mayor.
All right, thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it. Right, with that, that brings us to announcements. Our first announcement is a proclamation declaring the month of October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tualton, and that'll be read by Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. And this is the proclamation declaring the month of October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tualton. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities, but often has a disproportionate effect on communities and groups impacted by inequity. And whereas domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial, and digital abuse, and can occur between family members, intimate partners, and within dating relationships. And whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States report having experienced domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, or physical assault by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence impacts vulnerable victims, including children, as approximately fifty percent of Washington County children who are child abuse victims also live in homes with domestic violence. And whereas in twenty twenty-two, the Family Justice Center served a total of four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven survivors, and the Domestic Violence Resource Center provided eight thousand three hundred and forty-four crisis services to survivors despite challenges due to the pandemic. And whereas domestic violence incidents and are some of the most complex and dangerous incidents that law enforcement respond to in our community, putting their lives at risk every day in the belief that a coordinated community response is necessary to support survivors, hold offenders accountable, and work towards ending the cycle of violence. And now therefore be proclaimed that the city of Tualton designates the month of October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent platform to show support for the domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staff, victim service organizations, the prosecutors who hold offenders accountable, and law enforcement officers in our community. It also provides our community the opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope, and assistance to victims. Introduced and adopted this ninth day of October twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us to item number two, a proclamation declaring October twenty-third to thirty-first twenty twenty-three as Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week in the city of Tualton, and this will be led by Councilor Hillier and the Tualton Together folks. Sure. Welcome. Sure.
Proclamation declaring October twenty-three through thirty-one twenty twenty-three, Red Ribbon Week in the city of Tualton. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epic stages. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership, or the NFP, is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Week campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Week campaign will be celebrated during Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-three through thirty-one. And whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, seniors, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, as well as other activities that LEAP and Tualton Together will be advocating for in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Tualton does hereby proclaim October twenty-three through thirty-one twenty twenty-three as Red Ribbon Week and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Introduced and adopted this ninth day of October twenty twenty-three.
Perfect. Um, first I'd like to, um, highlight the handouts that we handed you. That is, oh. I'm Hannah Shelley. Um, I'm an intern from George Fox University for Tualton Together. Thank you.
And I'm Olivia. I'm just a member of LEAP.
Perfect. Yeah, so first off, I wanted to highlight the handouts that we handed each of you. That is going to be an event, um, for Spanish speakers on October twenty-eighth. We are partnering with, um, it's a tri-county event that Tualton Together is representing. Um, and it is going to highlight healthy communication, uh, and it will be held at Tualton High School. And then also we handed out a little bag. It says Detera on it. Those are resources that we provide. Um, it is instant medication disposal. So if you ever were unable to make it to a safe disposal site to drop off any medication, you could put pills, liquid medication, or patches into that bag. And once you put warm water in it, it will instantly deactivate the medication. You can just seal it up and toss it in a regular garbage can. So those are those, and then I will let.
Hi, so today I'm here to talk about Red Ribbon Week, and I thought we could just start off by talking about the history. So it was originally organized by the National Family Partnership in response to the murder of Drug Enforcement Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, who was tortured and, uh, killed in Mexico during nineteen eighty-five. And then following his murder, community members from across the country began wearing red ribbons as a symbol of their commitment to raising awareness of, um, of the killing and destruction caused by drugs every day. Red Ribbon Week is an ideal way for communities to unite, taking a visible stand against drugs, and making a commitment toward the creation of a drug-free nation. So our club contribution has been us participating in Red Ribbon Week since two thousand and twelve, and we are planning on applying to become an official Red Ribbon Week school. And so this year we plan to kick off our campaign by, uh, creating posters that we can put up around school in order to spread the word about the week. And we will also make daily announcements that will create time for students to take the pledge, uh, to be kind to their mind and live drug-free. And then we will hold an art cafe where students can color at Red Ribbon Week coloring sheet, while also taking the pledge to support Red Ribbon Week and its drug-free commitment. Um, and then there will also be an art night where students can participate in making creative projects focused on the theme of Red Ribbon Week, which is to be kind to your mind. And we will be promoting a spirit day where students will wear red to, um, commit to having a drug-free nation as well. And then we will hold our first Hope Rally at the end where community members will unite together with the Suicide Prevention Council and bring awareness to, um, the community, uh, by holding signs and engaging with students at Tualton High School. So what can you do to help? The twenty twenty-three Red Ribbon Week theme is to be kind to your mind, and this campaign is about emphasizing the relationship between mental health and substance abuse. Um, our focus on preventative work comes from understanding the community and how we can reach students more effectively. This means being aware of the mental health issues that students have and how this affects their well-being. And Red Ribbon Week encourages the relationship between health and our communities. So this is an opportunity for discussion with students, children, and family members about how they can remain healthy and live drug-free. Our initiatives are meant to create hope for possibilities of happiness without drugs that harm the body and mind. And this is an opportunity to highlight the important role models in our community and encourage the adults in our communities to participate in helping out also. This year's theme is a reminder that everyday Americans across the country make significant, uh, daily contributions to communities by being the best they can be by, because they live drug-free. And you can participate in our efforts by making the Red Ribbon Week pledge, following LEAP on Instagram and other social media, and joining us in our Hope Rally. Thank you for your time.
Question. How's the Hillier?
Um, we're really super excited about the more robust plans that we've had since COVID. Things have kind of, you know, kind of ebbed and flowed. And we have a really engaged group of, uh, student leaders who are ready to make an impact in their community. And I think they're really excited about the opportunity with the Mental Health Rally and the opportunity to, for us to get engaged should we choose to do that. So if you're interested in joining the students, let us know, and we'll help make sure that you have the appropriate, um, backgrounds and all that stuff to walk on school property while students are, are on the, are on the property. But, um, the students are really excited about this.
Is there a website or something we can go to learn more about LEAP and the dates of your events and stuff like that? Where can we go?
Uh, we mostly post on our Instagram.
Instagram, I'm cool with that.
Except tualtontogether.org. If you hit youth, if you go to youth, youth on tualtontogether.org, youth. Yes, and, and we'll also be in the, uh, homecoming parade on Friday with our, with the positive mental health messaging and encouraging, yeah, so.
Other questions or comments?
Thanks to Councilor Brooks, we remembered the red ribbons this year. She reminded us last year. Sorry, Councilor.
It's okay. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for your leadership, um, with, among your peers and in our community. And I think that the work that you're doing is very important. And, um, so I just wanted to say thank you and, uh, please continue doing what you're doing. It's, uh, very valuable to our community.
Thank you so much.
How long's your internship been for?
Um, it is for the whole year, so it's my senior year, so up until graduation.
All right. Thanks for helping out, Cindy.
We have, we have two interns.
All right.
We're plus with, yeah, what a difference.
Anything else? Well, thank you both for coming tonight and keeping us abreast what's going on and for all the cool stuff. I don't, I've got quite a few of these pens. I love them. And I hear your head usually where the hair falls off, but it's cool.
The pledge is the adult pledge, a different one for you. That's really meaningful.
Okay.
Opportunity for talking points and things.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening. All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items that's not on tonight's agenda. Ooh, I skipped over Chief Pickering, sorry. And very important, yes, item number three. Thank you, Council President. Chief Pickering has a couple introductions tonight and a promotion to announce. Welcome, Chief.
Well, I'm sure they wouldn't mind sitting here for a little while longer. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, I am Greg Pickering. I'm honored to serve as your Chief of Police. I'm excited tonight to be able to introduce two new police officers for the city of Tualton and to, uh, acknowledge a new promotion. So first I'm gonna call up Officer Brendan Asher. So Officer Brendan Asher started with the Police Department on September fifth. Uh, Brendan grew up in Lake Stevens, Washington, uh, and after high school attended Washington State University. Where he earned a degree in business administration and also a degree in criminal justice and criminology. Um, we're, we were lucky to grab him right out of college and get him started early. Uh, Officer Asher is currently assigned to our Training Division. Uh, he will head to the Police Academy next week and start his, uh, sixteen weeks down in, in Salem, and will graduate the Police Academy in March, where he'll come back and begin his field training. So we're excited to get him into the training process and get him going. So I'd ask that you please welcome, uh, Officer Brendan Asher.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Pretty excited to get the, because what's the wait now to get in the academy?
Well, he was lucky, so.
It seemed pretty quick.
Yeah, so, uh, Brendan was one of those that we offered him a job back in July, but he had a, a commitment that he had, had committed to, uh, right out of school. So his waiting period was actually taken care of, uh, serving, uh, in a camp in Canada. And, uh, so we got him back in time to get him here and get him a little bit of training before we sent him off for the academy. So he's one of the lucky ones. Um, his partner CJ, who you met last month, um, has been waiting since July to go to the academy. So. Yeah, so Brendan was, was the, the lucky one that only had a short wait before he gets to go, so, yeah.
All right, well, welcome. Uh, looking forward to you getting through the academy and doing your one-year field training and become a full-fledged officer here. Is there anything else you'd like to say about yourself or a quiet kind of guy? I don't want to put you in the spot.
Nothing comes to mind.
All right, well, thank you for coming tonight and congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Officer Christian Jackson. So Officer Jackson started with the Police Department on September eighteenth. Uh, Officer Jackson grew up in Hillsborough and after high school attended Western Oregon University, where he earned a degree in criminal justice. After college, Officer Jackson was hired by the Oregon Department of Corrections and served as a corrections officer for the Two Rivers, uh, Correctional Institute in Eastern Oregon. Uh, after about two years with, with the DOC, Officer Jackson was hired as the Hermiston Police Department, where he spent two and a half years, and we were lucky enough to scoop him away and bring him back to the metro area. Uh, so we're super excited to have, uh, Officer Jackson start with us with, uh, with some experience under his belt and hopefully hit the ground running. So he also is currently assigned to our Training Division. We'll start his patrol training next week as well. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to get him out on the road as, as soon as we can. So I would, uh, ask that you welcome Officer Christian Jackson.
You're welcome. So for, uh, lateral officers, is it still a one-year training or is it more compressed?
No, his will be more condensed. So he's already been through the academy, which is great. So he's certified through the state. Um, he just has to pick up with, uh, the field training and, and having most of, you know, two and a half years of experience, a lot of the basic police stuff. Um, he already has under his belt, so it's getting to know the city of Tualton and our policies and procedures. You know, thankfully he worked in the state, so he understands the Oregon state laws, and so getting to know Washington County procedures and Clackamas County procedures, since we're in both counties. So, uh, it will be an accelerated training program for him and, and hopefully, um, towards the end of the year, so only a couple of months.
Yeah. Well, welcome. Thank you for making the trip here from Hermiston.
Appreciate it.
To a bigger community, but so the maps can be bigger. You're gonna have to memorize and know every address. Because no one uses GPS anymore, you know?
Yeah.
But welcome. I'm super excited to have you here and, and to know our police force. Uh, Chief Pickering runs a great force and very well respected by the community. We got great relationships between, um, the police, you know, we got the Police Foundation with the Police Dogs, and we got all kinds of, you know, public support for our police department, unlike other places in the country. So you come into a great department.
Glad to be scooped up.
All right. Get away from those watermelons.
Yeah. That's right. And lastly, uh, I will invite up Sergeant James Wall. So I'm excited to announce that, uh, Sergeant James Wall was promoted to the rank of Sergeant on September eighteenth. So Sergeant Wall started his police career in Texas with the Saginaw Police Department. Uh, Sergeant Wall served as a patrol officer, a trainer, and a task force officer on an auto theft task force while in Saginaw. He was also promoted to the role of Sergeant at Saginaw, uh, when he was there. Luckily, in two thousand and fourteen, we were able to bring him to Tualton, uh, and we were hired him as a patrol officer. Uh, since two thousand and fourteen, uh, Sergeant Wall has served in, in numerous roles in the Police Department, uh, including patrol officer, a field training officer, and he's a, a department instructor in several disciplines, uh, and does a great job with that. So Sergeant Wall is finishing up his sergeant's training this, this week on night shift, uh, and will assume, uh, command of his own patrol shift on Saturday, uh, when he'll be released to, to go forth in fury as a patrol sergeant, uh, working on night shift, so.
Good junior guy.
Yeah, so, uh, I would ask that you, uh, please congratulate Sergeant James Wall for his promotion to police patrol sergeant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, you and I talked before the city council meeting, yeah, those, those night shifts. Making that transition back to night and being the new person, having those night shifts are tough. And I was joking when I did my ride along with, uh, Brian, that, uh, you know, the Dutch bros know most of you guys' orders as you drive through at night, so, um, I guess they'll have some more business from, you know, a new sergeant, some more police officers.
Yes, sir.
But congratulations, pretty much. Anyone else, or? Yeah, welcome aboard, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
All right, thank you very much. Now can I do public comment? All right. All right, I'm gonna double, yep, three items done. Uh, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding items that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the city council chambers who would like to make, uh, comments, I'll take those first. And then I'll reach out to folks who are in Zoom who are not AI agents. So anyone, do we have anyone signed up, Nicole? Anyone in the Zoom meeting that is not a bot from artificial intelligence? All right. Nobody in Zoom. All right. That's cool. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items considered routine, they would be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And item number two, consideration of, uh, resolution number fifty-seven thirty dash twenty-three, authorizing acceptance of right-of-way from Washington County for the Boone Ferry Corridor Phase Two project part of the Tualton Moving Forward Program. Would need council like either of these items removed.
Would this be a good time for me to make a comment that's not on the agenda? Or should I wait after?
Uh, do it in Council Communications?
Yes.
Okay.
I move we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the council, uh, the consent agenda as read. Any discussions or motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports. Our always energetic summer programs recap and fall preview. The dynamic duo who will keep us awake for a while. No guitars, no, no props, no nothing?
We're in the props this time.
I'm wearing the sunshine.
Well, good evening. Yes, we did deliver a poster and some stickers for you. So, good evening, Council, Mayor Bubanik. I'm Julie Ludeman. I'm our recreation manager.
And I'm Sarah Justedus, and I'm Public Services Manager at the library.
And as you know, we are here to give you a recap on our summer programs and a little fall preview. So, oh, right.
So, summer at the library is summer reading, and we had another very successful year. Um, we had two thousand three hundred twenty-two readers participating. We had about a third of them finish their logs. And in total, Tualton read a million and a half minutes this summer. So, pretty proud of that. Um, the photograph we have here is another program that we're really proud of. It's a continuing, uh, partnership we have with a chamber music group. Um, and this year they brought two regional or world premiere pieces that people in Tualton got to hear first before anybody else. There we are. And some more things that happened, um, we did our science on the plaza. We do keep a steam focus on some of our programming throughout the year, um, especially tying in with our maker space. So what you're seeing there is an egg drop. Kids figured out different ways to try to protect an egg as it was dropped from a ladder, and, um, there was much splatting going on for that one. Um, we had, uh, another music program that is Julian Perkins, who's the new artistic director of Portland Baroque. He came in, um, to demonstrate on a harpsichord. Um, and then we had a lot of fun with an interactive, uh, project we called The Meeple's. People, this, the theme this summer was find your voice. So we had our teen volunteers making stages, and people could come in and make little singers for the stages. And we had people guess how many, so, uh, had been left with us on those stages, so.
Do you remember how many?
Five hundred and fifty-five.
Well, also way back in July, I know some of you were there for Viva Tualton, um, which was held at Baldi Park, and Viva Tualton is really a, a whole-city collaboration on this event to highlight our, the arts and culture of our city. And this was, um, really a great event held at Baldi Park. We had four different performances over the course of the day. We had twenty-two vendor booths and nonprofits, which was our largest ever. Uh, we had five different food providers that I sampled from each of them. They were all delicious. And lots of free family activities and crafts and, uh, all sorts of great stuff. We saw lots and lots of people coming out in the community, and as you can see, some smiling faces. The piñatas were always a hit. And also thanks to our Police Department for humoring us and helping raise and lower those piñatas. It is, uh, not an easy task. Um, and one that I, I try and stay away from because there's lots of swinging sticks. So, lot of fun. Also a big shout out, of course, to the library for all of their help and to Betsy, um, Rodriguez Roof, who is really the passion behind this project. And of course, all the other departments in our parks maintenance and everybody else that makes it happen. It's, it's a really great program. Um, and it was really fun to see many of you out there. So thank you for joining us. And then we also had our eight weeks of summer camp again this summer. It, it really feels like it was ten years ago, but also somehow just yesterday that we wrapped up summer camp this year. Um, in our first through sixth grade camps, we had four hundred and thirty-two kids. We had five hundred and eighty, uh, what is that, six? I can't read it.
Sixty-two?
Wrong. Five hundred and sixty-two on the waitlist. Yes, that's more than we're enrolled. Um, we also had our seventh through tenth grade teen program. And we had ninety teens, a hundred and twenty-two on the waitlist. We also offered, um, fifty-four individual scholarships for camp this summer. And we had, um, about fifteen summer camp staff and five, uh, junior recreation leaders who are sort of my recreation leaders in training. So they'll be the future staff of our, our summer camp program. So it was great. We had program themes like Harry Potter. We brought that back. Um, people are still real into Harry Potter, and it was a lot of fun. Um, we had Water Week, we had Sports Week, Star Wars Week, and the last week is always a Color Clash Week where it's just all sorts of craziness. And, um, it seems to be everyone's favorite, including mine, so.
Julie, can I go to that camp next year?
Yes, okay, of course. All you have to do is get one of our special camp t-shirts and you're in. We'll have us, we'll have a special guest. Bring some talents. And then we also had this summer, we had our concerts in the parks. We had four Friday night concerts. And we also had our two lunchtime concerts on Wednesday afternoons over at the, um, Plaza on the Lake of the Commons. We had about five thousand people join us over the course of the summer. And lots of really great bands. We had this band that's performing was a Fleetwood Mac cover band and they were quite good. We do have a really, we're lucky to work with a really good band booking agent and she finds some really top-notch acts for us to bring to Tewallaton. So we're happy about that. And again, I think I've seen, I've seen some of you at concerts as well. So you know how much fun they are.
And one of the ways we get through so many of these programs are volunteers, both at the library and at events. We had another very successful summer youth program of volunteering at the library. We have developed a two-tier teens and tween program to allow the younger kids who are enthusiastic about the library to have a role there. We had some new programs for them, including display crew. So they kept things really interesting and fresh throughout the summer in the library. They also, we had some makerspace volunteers out of those teens. If you have a book on hold at our library, you'll see new signage that our teen volunteers helped to make in the makerspace. We had a teen intern this year that is a new program from us and it was founded, excuse me, funded with a competitive grant through the state library. We had Emmy Avilar who got to learn all kinds of library operations and also helped us design new programming for teens that I'll be talking about in a little bit. Of course, we had lots of volunteers with Blender Dash and Viva Tewallaton as well to help those programs run smoothly.
And we also have, in addition to our library and event volunteers, we also have our summer parks volunteers. Large portion of that is Team Tewallaton. So that is the teenagers, together everyone achieves more. In Tewallaton, they are the summer park volunteers. So sixty-five kids contributed thirteen hundred hours. If you were in a park this summer during the day, you probably saw them come in and start cleaning up and picking up trash and doing all sorts of great projects for us. We're learning leadership development skills at the same time. We also have corporate and group volunteers. We've really seen a step up with some of those larger groups that come out to volunteer. We had ninety-five people and a total of two hundred and eighty-five hours. And then the DIY volunteers, this was something that really blossomed during COVID when we couldn't do a lot of group activities, but people still wanted to contribute. And so thus the DIY volunteer program was born and there were fifteen intrepid volunteers contributing two hundred and fifty hours. And then this fall, we have a hug a tree corporate event, October twenty-sixth. Put Down Roots is an annual tree planting event, November fourth. Light up the lake. It's a corporate event on November sixteenth. Those are volunteers that help put up all the lights around the lake. And National Family Volunteering Day is November eighteenth. So there's lots of opportunities to get involved. And you can go to the city Tewallaton website, tewallatonoregon.gov/volunteer.
The Tewallaton Police Department was also busy keeping our kids active this summer with their program for kids. They had a hundred and sixty kind of middle school age, up to young high school kids. I'm pretty sure they did not get to actually drive the motorcycle. They also were a big part of National Night Out throughout the city. I know other departments also were present there making connections with our residents.
And I know that the motorcycle and any police vehicles, always the hit of any event. Everyone wants to to get their picture with that. So that's why it's fun. And the Onyx and Tony don't hurt either. Okay, so Wantita Pole Center wins the award for the most colorful photograph in our presentation tonight. So this was a a trip, a day trip that they went to, and I believe it was called Splatter Box. It's a paint experience where you throw paint all over everything, including yourself, and they had a great time. So the Wantita Pole Center is our active aging center. And they'd have fitness programs, enrichment, travel and wellness. And over the course of the summer, June, July and August, they had four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven people attend their programs. This is also where Meals on Wheels serves lunches on Tuesdays and Thursdays every week. So there's a lot going on in the center and I encourage any of you, especially if you're fifty or older, which I will be very soon too. So we can all go and participate in the programs together.
And complementing what we do directly in the city for the summer, we have recreation partners such as Gillow Brooks, Skyhawks Sports Camp, Skate Like a Girl, our youth sports leagues, the Historical Society, and of course, the pickleball club.
Yes, and Tewallaton Pickleball Club is a group of volunteers and they kind of help coordinate all of the pickleball play that happens on our courts. In June, July and August, there were six thousand eight hundred people who played pickleball. So it is exploding. We, yeah, and I should learn a little bit about pickleball. So it's become quite popular.
And of course, it doesn't stop because we have programs going on.
It just keeps coming.
Some of the things coming up, the library, we have our Dia de los Muertos celebration on Saturday, October twenty eighth. We have changed our teen Friday night program. It just started up this past weekend. We wait till school rolls back in. For years and years, we did teen movie night. And we saw dwindling interest last year when we finally were able to start that program up again. So our teen intern developed a survey, talked to teens who were coming in the library, got that survey out to teens who hadn't been coming in the library and said, okay, you have this unique time where the teens are the only patrons in the building. What do you want to do? And what they actually told us is, well, we want to hang out. It's literally called Teen Hangout. This Friday, they chose to play board games, a little bit of video gaming, some crafting. It's, they will determine week by week what they want to do. Sometimes they've asked for special, you know, a couple of special theme weeks, but it's, they really wanted to get together and socialize. This is what they really missed in the past couple of years. So we're really excited to have their input and refocus our programming based on that. We still have plenty of October things coming along. We have our Halloween Dance Orama. I understand that Mayor Bubanik will be visiting and seeing all the very cutesy dressed littles. We have more music, unfortunately, that the musician who's there will be actually with us in the spring. We have jazz coming up this Sunday. And we have we have the Shrunken Regatta. Again, we started this when we couldn't gather quite so many people together. We decided to have a little fun with it and we've been giving out these kits with, you know, palm-sized pumpkins that people bring back and decorate and make part of our display. So it's one of those things we look forward to each fall. Next month, it's Dinoember, All Things Dinosaur. So we have several programs especially aimed at kids that celebrate dinosaurs.
Well, as a, one of the representatives working on the pumpkin regatta, I would just like to say that we love when people take our ideas and run with it and and I think that's one of the fun things about this wacky event is that it just, it activates your creativity and we see that in the library. And so it's very fun. And the display is very cute. All right. And then back to the Wantita Pole Center. So you heard about the Veterans Breakfast. I will be there. Hopefully I'll see some of you there. That is on November ninth at the Pole Center. Prior to that, there'll be a Friday, the thirteenth haunted walking tour. Not sure exactly where they're going. I don't think it's anywhere in Tewallaton.
I was gonna say, it's not my office?
Could be, could be. I've also heard things about the Van Rade and Basement back when the YIC used to host haunted houses. So but I don't think that's where they're going. Mindfulness and breathwork to relax after all of that. So November twenty-first and get you ready for the holidays, of course. And then there's a DIY wreath making workshop on November twenty-eighth. And that brings us to the thing that we've talked about a little bit, but yes, the West Coast Giant Pumpkin Regatta. Not the very small pumpkins, but the very enormous pumpkins will be out on the lake on Sunday, October twenty-second. We have pumpkins up to a thousand thirteen hundred pounds. The real big ones, we don't carve into boats because those are real hard to paddle. But we will be out there again on Sunday, October twenty-second and oh, whoa, getting a little too excited there. So we have the Giant Pumpkin Races. We have the Five K Regatta Run that starts and ends at Tewallaton Community Park and that is the Tewallaton Rotary, another great partner of ours. Lots of family entertainment. All of the entertainment is free. Most of the, all the activities, most of the activities are free. Costume contests, we have crafts, food, and of course, there's no admission fee. We also have a few new things this year. We have a bike valet. So we were a little embarrassed when last year we were told, well, we looked on your website and it said to ride your bike to the Pumpkin Regatta. So I did and I couldn't find anywhere to park it. Yeah, well, that is a problem. And this person actually also stepped up to volunteer to run the bike valet. So not only did she have a problem, she came to us with a solution which we love. So we will have volunteers running a bike valet service at the Pumpkin Regatta. So if you'd like to ride your bike, we have a good place to put it this year. We also will be having, expanding our food court area and have a big dining area. So we know people like to eat lots of good food, myself included. And we're looking forward to having all of those great activities, pumpkin bowling, pumpkin golf, pumpkin crafts with Tewallaton together, face painting. We have dancing witches, we have pirates, we have everything you could ever imagine that might happen at a fall festival is probably happening at the Pumpkin Regatta. And the day before the Pumpkin Regatta, we have pumpkins and pints. And this is on Saturday, October twenty-first at noon at Stickman Brewing. This is where the pumpkin growers from the Pacific Giant Vegetable Growers Association bring their pumpkins for their official weigh-off. So if you want to see these big, big pumpkins up close and personal, this is a great opportunity. They also bring all sorts of other weirdly enormous vegetables and I find those also quite fascinating.
What's the biggest Brussels sprout they brought?
I have not seen a Brussels sprout, but they bring these things called long beans and I swear they're twelve foot tall. I'm not sure exactly what they are and I don't know that you eat them, but they, they're, they're quite interesting and the tomatoes are also enormous. You can make a lot of salsa. So we invite you all to both the Pumpkins and Pints on October twenty-first and of course, Regatta on the twenty-second. And I know that many of you will be there. So if I, if I miss seeing you, I'm saying hello right now and thank you again for your support. And thank you for your support all throughout the year. It makes our jobs easy and we appreciate it. So thank you.
Any questions about library programs, recreation programs? Nice job. You guys are always very creative, imaginative, thinking up new things and I very much appreciate it because we hear terrific feedback about the programs, both our rec programs and our library programs, so.
On the summer camps, there was, there's a waiting list of five hundred plus kids. Is that because staff shortage or locations or?
So we have, we only have the capacity to have so many people, mostly with staffing. I've often thought, so we have our summer camp registration opens and things fill up with about five minutes. And I remember a few years ago, I was trying to get tickets for Hamilton and I was, I wasn't able to do that. And I thought, well, now I know what it feels like to sign up for summer camp. The demand is just exceeding, has exceeded our capacity. So hopefully we'll in the future be able to meet that capacity in a little bit better.
And where, where are they? Is that at the camp, at the park or at the library?
Yeah, all the camps are held outside in Tewallaton Community Park.
Other questions or comments?
Last year, the tomato, that one was twelve pounds. I still remember.
I was trying to remember and I was thinking five, but I thought, no, it has to be way bigger than that. Tomato's as big as your head.
Other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. Looking forward to all the fall programs and the fun and all things pumpkin this month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to a public hearing. Item number one, resolution number five, seven, two, nine, dash, twenty-three, authorizing the use of a design build alternative contracting method for the Pole Center siding project. Welcome back, Rachel.
Yes, I'm back. My presentation not as fun. Sorry. But we're gonna talk about the Wantita Pole Center some more. So I'm here tonight to talk about a design build authorization for a project that we've got going on in the future at our Wantita Pole Center. So, quick overview, the Wantita Pole Center, originally built in nineteen eighty-two, before my time, still has its original siding. The siding is getting worn due to weather, age and damage from woodpeckers and it needs to be replaced. Replacement work is important to ensure that the rot doesn't occur on the inner structural wood of the building. We're seeing a little bit of rot on the outside and especially on some of the corners and areas where high moisture. So replacing it sooner is probably a good idea. There's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the current fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four budget for a replacement of the siding. Our goal is to have work completed by the end of this fiscal year, but caveat that we are applying for some CDBG funding for this project, which could alter the schedule a little bit, but if we receive grant funding for this work, that would be a great thing. So we're proposing a replacement of the wood siding with new metal siding, similar to what is in place at the building here. Metal siding is more durable. It'll likely last the remainder of the life of the Wantita Pole Center. So that's great. It can also help freshen and modernize the look of the center, which is centrally located in Tewallaton Community Park and adjacent to the newly purchased park property along this ferry road. So it's going to be a central point of that, that park area down by the river. So freshening and making that a good place that invites people in is a, is a good idea. The process of replacing the siding includes some basic stylistic design, measurement and acquisition of materials, application for permits, includes going to the architecture review board, demolition of the existing siding and then installation of the new siding. So the entire process from design through the end of construction, probably six to nine months, as we know, supply chain's been kind of crazy over the last few years. So adding some contingency and wiggle room would probably be a good idea. So that's just a risk with our timeline. So design build solicitation process, what is it? This leads to the proposal in front of council tonight. We're asking you to authorize the use of an alternative contracting method called design build. Traditional solicitation process, as you may know, breaks into kind of several different procurements. The city hires a design firm through one procurement and then a construction contractor separately. Staff manage both contractors and the overall project. The alternative design build approach we're proposing tonight is a streamlined procurement method that we feel would work well for this project. So it's not a fit for everything, but we feel it's a good fit for this one. Design build allows the city to issue one RFP and we select a single contractor that handles both the design and the construction of the project. So for the Wantita Pole Center, we'd issued an RFP. We'd select one firm that we'd work with for the entire project. The firm would develop a design and set of specifications for us. We would work with them, kind of say, hey, this is what our ideas are. So we wouldn't be completely out of the process. But they would then apply for the permits for us needed for the project and then the firm would carry out the demolition and installation of the siding. Or they could sub this work out depending on their capabilities. So benefits of a design build solicitation process. So as identified in resolution five, seven, two, nine, dash, two, three, there's a long list there, but highlighting some of those. There are a few key reasons why the design build method appears to be beneficial approach for this project. The design build method allows us to work with one key representative, as I mentioned, who will kind of keep things moving along. The single point of responsibility will keep the project going seamlessly from the design into construction and will keep the, the project on time and ideally on budget. The request for proposals soliciting the design build firm allows the city to select on factors beyond low bid. Experience qualifications and approach to the project can all be considered along with the proposed cost. So we can kind of weigh what's important to us. Selecting on more than the basis of price can ideally lead to a better outcome and better quality of work. While design bid means we don't have to select based on low bid, it can lead to cost savings over the entirety of the project. The use of one firm can offer flexibility to cost engineer the project with lower extra mobilization costs and it can limit change orders that can be associated with the handoff from the designer to the construction company. Lastly, is construction management. Use of design build ensures that the demolition and installation will be monitored and overseen by the design firm or a project manager that they identify and it'll alleviate some of the pressure on city staff to continuously work to monitor the site. So that'll be a good kind of extra insurance that the project is done right and we have eyes on it. That'll be a good kind of extra insurance that the project is, is done right, and we have eyes on it. The next steps, um, we're asking council tonight for a determination of whether they will authorize the design build process. We'll continue to develop the scope of work and do a solicitation to select our contractor, who will then begin the design process. Um, and then go through permitting process, and then ultimately construction. Like I said, the timeline is a little up in the air with the CDBG grant process, but, um, we're happy to keep council posted on, on that, so. Any questions?
So this was the same process we used for this building that Clay led, correct?
I believe so. With a, like a CMGC, yeah.
That, that, and I know that was one of the significant, we did save a bit of money, uh, having as one process, correct?
We also used it on the library, um, back, back in two thousand nine maybe, or?
Going way back, which she had. Uh, questions for Rachel?
I'm more in support, I, I'm in favor of this process, it's very efficient, um, it can maybe. Save, it would save a lot of money, it definitely would, thank you.
Other questions? Since, since this is a resolution, not an ordinance, uh, it would just be a voiceful.
Your honor, uh, just a point of order, I believe a public hearing was required this evening. And I, I assume that when you invited Rachel up for the staff report, the public hearing was declared open, I think just for the record.
Okay.
You would want to ask whether there are any, uh, persons in the audience or online that wanna comment on this for or against, if there are, we invite them up. If there's not, then you would close the public hearing.
Alright, thanks, Ken. Alright, can't, uh, irritate our city attorney. So, uh, is there anyone in this, uh, chamber or in Zoom? Who like to, uh, make comments in favor of the resolution, do we have anybody? Still quiet? Alright, anyone who'd like to, uh, state objections to this resolution and ask us not to endorse it? Alright, so with that, I'll now close the hearing on, uh, resolution five, seven, two, nine, dash, twenty-three, and, uh. Open it for discussion and/or motions. Counsel Brooks.
Um, thank you for the presentation, and I also, um, think that it's a good solution. And especially with, it's just siding, it's not even like you have an architect or anything, there's no load bearing walls that I can understand, so. Anyway, thank you for bringing it up. Motion? I'll take a mo- I'll make a motion to, uh, consider, uh, resolution number. I've dropped resolution number five, seven, two, nine, dash, twenty-three. Adopting findings in support of an exemption from competitive bidding and authorizing the use of a design build. Alternative contracting method for the Juanita Pole Center siding.
Second?
I could say all that again, and so I have a motion and a second for adoption of resolution of five, seven, two, nine, dash, twenty-three. Any discussions on those motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Alright, that brings us to item number two, uh, council appointment of transportation system plan, community advisory committee members, welcome Steve. This is not a public hearing. Okay. I downloaded it this morning. Alright, welcome Steve.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and councils, Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. I'm here in my capacity representing the staff project management team for the transportation system update. So we're here before you as part of the transportation system update, a very important component of this process. Is going to be our public outreach and stakeholder engagement. As part of that process, uh, we are putting together a community advisory committee. At the direction of council, uh, we solicited interest, uh. In membership in the community advisory committee through interested parties and volunteer lists. An announcement at the city council and planning commission meetings, as well as direct outreach to the Twalton Chamber of Commerce, the Twalton Rotary, the Twalton Aging Task Force. And representatives of all community involvement organizations. We were pleased to get a total of thirty applications for membership in the community advisory committee. Um, of the prospective thirty applicants, we have recommended twelve. Um, we feel that they represent a broad spectrum of backgrounds, interests, and perspectives. Um, we have everyone, you know, from people who are, it's kind of their first time participating in an advisory committee. To seasoned people who, uh, represented the community the last time we updated the TSP. In addition, we heard from the council that there is interest in appointing one to two counselors as liaisons to the community advisory committee. And we also had interest from one of our planning commissioners. And so that would be a total of fourteen to fifteen members. And so, um, happy to just read through the list of community advisory committee members for those of you that don't have it pulled up in your packet, thank you Bates. So, um, just in alphabetical order by first name, we have Andrew Evans, Becky Quinn, Claudia Sterling, Alina. Elena Arustagai, Justin Linsley, Cassie Miller, Katie Gates, Marlo Hornberger. Nancy Cr- Crushhour, Robert Kellogg, Susan Noack, and Victoria Fisk. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Uh, questions for Steve? President Pratt.
Are you gonna have, um, I guess input from other agencies, like I'm thinking TVF and R groups?
Yeah, that's, um, uh, that will be a separate technical advisory committee.
So Brooks?
I just was wondering if there's any youth?
Um, we did not receive any youth applications, we have one person who, um, identified as a young professional, so we tried to balance it that way.
Okay, remembering back, if I remember right, uh, the seed was planted about, uh, council representatives. And I'm just gonna go in order of remember people raising their hands, it was Council Gonzalez and Council President Pratt, then Council Reyes. Um, so my proposal is, I wanna include as many, all three of you as much as I can, or we, we don't want, not just me, the council. So, um, I'm just gonna go since Council President Pratt and Councilor Gonzalez were, uh, quicker to draw, if you will. If you would serve as an alternate, and have all three, in case one of them can't come to a meeting or he can participate also, how's that sound? Everybody's on their heads? Okay. Have you, have you proposed meeting dates yet, or in commitments?
We don't, we don't yet, roughly what we're looking at is about a half a dozen meetings over the course of the next year. We're anticipating them to be in the evening, we're anticipating them to be hybrid and probably one and a half to two hours.
Four hours a night?
Nice try.
I was gonna step back.
Yeah, I think so, we're hoping to start in November approximately.
Alright. Any other questions? Yep, what you need for, as far as council?
I think we're just li- looking for if council, I don't know if you need to actually take a line, but, but just council, uh, acquiescence to the recommended list. And then we're.
We got the two volunteers and the alternate, so, yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that brings, uh, to, uh, items removed from consent, we had none. Uh, council communications, I know two folks wanna speak, so I'll start off with, uh, I'll do, go down a line of cards, start with Council Sacco.
Thank you, um, so as, um, mentioned during, uh, the work session, um, there was a survey discussed at C four. Um, at our last meeting, and, um. The, uh, the question on the table is, does, does Twalton want to participate in funding the survey? Partly, um, in conjunction with, uh, Clackamas County and, um, cities in Clackamas County. To, to gather a statistically valid survey regarding tolling. Um, so we have, uh, credible information on how people feel about tolling. And, um, we were going to take a vote, if there was interest in funding or not, the funding level is not. Um, it is not, has not been discussed yet, it's just interest, um, and then we would, um. Presumably, um, bring back a number, I don't know kinda how, how that would work, um, or at least keep people informed. Um, of what that, what that cost would be.
I, I could see saying yes, wanting to be involved, and I'd leave it, uh, to the city manager's discretion on what's, based on her budget, what's. You know, unless it's something outrageous.
An appropriate funding level.
Yeah, appropriate funding level.
Yeah, so do you know who's spearheading it, is it Clackamas County?
Yeah.
I'll establish, so we could check in with Clackamas County and see how their, whoever else is gonna be combined and how much it would be. Yeah.
Though I'd assume we'd have to go through some kinda RFP process, I don't know how fast they could put this together.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either, they may have some kind of pro- expedited process they can do, and then just bill cities back.
Okay.
So there, um, do we wanna take a roll call or?
Well, yeah, I just wanna say like, that, I don't know if any of you read that actual, what ODOT's little survey says. But it's really ambiguous and not to the point, so I, I think this could be very great. And it gives us some fodder, I guess, to go back to ODOT and say, hey, look, this is what's really happening.
I'm all for it, cause I mean, the, ODOT is very open and candid about their inability to communicate this well. And their, in my opinion, inability to listen to what people are saying. So if we, at least if we have a statistically valid survey, at least we have another piece of support of pushing back on ODOT on any tolling plan. Um, and it would just help us as much as possible, is it gonna stop it, who knows, but it's something we can go back to the legislature with. And say, hey, look, these are the people we've heard from, and you're, they're representatives, should you be voting how you're, you know. Your, uh, representative folks are asking you to do. So, I don't think, do we need a vote, or am we just?
Not necessarily.
For, for people to support?
Yeah.
Or do you have to bring it back, or?
I don't know that we need to bring it back, but I, a question will be what, how much involvement you want. Or Clackamas County is gonna give on like, design of the questions, and, you know, kinda the scope. The scope of, of the survey, but I.
I could see C four running with this. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I would go, yeah. I mean, I know Clackamas County is like, is aligned with what you guys are thinking, though I can't imagine that they would go off in a direction that you guys wouldn't.
I know, Wes, Wes Lynn has spent serious dollars on this, so.
And the, and the whole thing at C four and these committees is being, um, the whole idea is that we're speaking as one boys together. To be more of a force.
Thumbs up? Counsel Brooks?
I'm, I'm up for it too, but I also think that, um, if it makes sen- sense financially, you know, when we get a number. And, um, and, and more information about it, you know, just to be, use prudent. Like I, I'd love to support and, but also, you know, just want everybody to feel comfortable and want it very transparent here.
I, what's, what makes sense to me is somewhere like five to seventy-five hundred doll, five thousand to seventy-five hundred. Like, I, I can't imagine it being any more than that for, for a jurisdiction like us, yeah, our portion.
So how do we, no context?
I can, we can, we can, we can chase that down.
Thank you.
If you're okay with that.
Counsel Hillary? Counsel Reyes?
Um, yeah, I visited, I took a tour on, I took, um, the ware, I took a tour out with the warehouse. Um, community warehouse store, I'm sorry, I'm just already banking out today. Um, I just wanna let the community know that they are, um, they're a nonprofit, and they're here in our community. And they're looking for, um, just items that they can, uh, give to people who are. Um, who were, or, who are homeless, and they're starting a new life, or they want to furnish their apartment. Or they need like items such as pots, kitchen items, utensils, so it's not just mattress, I know that's one thing they need. But they also need, um, like eating utensils, um, so if you're out there and you don't. If you wanna get rid of plates, dishes, uh, it's a good place to drop them off and, um. I'd say it's a donation, they're also looking for rugs, uh, chairs, uh, so it's not just big items, but little items, kitchen items especially. And, um, and things that, um, like small appliances, like blenders, um, toasters, things like that. They also are looking for volunteers, that's what they, I forgot to mention earlier, they're looking, if you have skills in woodwork. Um, they sometimes get broken, um, uh, furniture, but they can make it into like a table, like. So if you're very skilled in transforming some, all this wood into like bed, uh, beds. Or bed frames, or tables, or chairs, or, um, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm sure there are people out there very creative that way, but if you're, if you're creative that, in that way, they're looking for that kind of skill. They're looking for people that have worked like in, like labeling or pricing items as well. Um, also those who are, uh, who can load and unload, um, trucks, move things around, movers. Uh, so those are just volunteers that they are specifically looking, because it will help with their, the items that they have there. And, um, if you can't do any of that stuff, not a skilled in woodwork or any of that. Um, go ahead and shop, they have wonderful, um, little pieces of furniture, uh, some very unique pieces, so. Um, it's a win-win situation for everybody, uh, you get rid of things, they refurbish, they would do. They would try to sell it or give it away to someone that needs it, thank you.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Thank you, so I have two co- two comments I wanna make, um, the first one is in reference to Willow Brooks in Brownsbury Park. I read an article in Twalton Times that they're under review on what they're gonna do to alleviate traffic, and if possibly, they may not be in Twalton. Are we doing anything to assist them, or guiding them, or what can, uh, we are helping to make sure they don't leave Twalton? If that's even a, a scenario that that may happen, but it's sounding like we're having problems there, is there anything that we've done? I know Ross left, I was gonna ask him.
I'm happy to get with you separately on it, um, yeah, absolutely, we've been meeting with them about, um, a, uh, a traffic plan. And, um, oh, a way for them to be in Twalton for this coming summer. I think ultimately they've outgrown, like, Brownsbury Park, but I, yes, we're, we're working with them.
Okay, thank you, the other item that I wanna talk about is the recent events happening in our public schools in Twalton. I, I'm not gonna go down and revisit all that has happened, but I just wanna make a general comment, and hoping to get the council's support. I sit on the Tiger Twalton School District Budget Committee as vice chair, and the go-forward budget this year reflects thirteen hundred less students in our school district. Um, that has caused to lay off sixty-two teachers, stress on a lot of programs, increases our property taxes. Um, we had to dip below our reserves just to fund and blunt the situation. One begs to wonder, why is there a he- high unenrollment rate in Twalton? I am one of those parents who have enrolled my kids from the public schools here in Twalton, and I don't feel my young kids are safe. It's sad to say that as a councilperson in Twalton, that we're having to deal with this. When I attended the budget meeting, they said that the reason why there's unenrollment in the public schools is because kids aren't having, parents are not having kids. Or, or people moving out, yet the private schools are, have a huge waiting list. The charter schools as well, homeschooling is on the rise, and there's even a bill collecting signatures to try to get school choice on the ballot. Now, today, there was gonna be a huge meeting at the Tiger Twalton School District, it would move to online, which curtailed a lot of parents from showing up in person. But it's because they're not being heard, that I am being reached out to by a lot of parents. Now, my support is for the parents, not so much of what's going on with schools and all that, but I want the parents to be heard. So I want to first acknowledge that, as councilperson in the public arena, that I hear you and I support you parents. Once again, I want to say that Twalton here, we have no jurisdiction, other than just a general acknowledgement in hearing the parents out. I would like the council to come forth with a proclamation in support of parents in the Tiger Twalton School District. As things are starting to heat up, and so we wanna make sure we have unified front supporting the parents. And as the schools, um, you know, work out what they need to work out, so. That's what I'm gonna say, and I would like to, I did draft a proclamation sample, I don't know how that works, but at least to. that's what I'm gonna say. And I would like to, I did draft a proclamation sample. I don't know how that works, but at least to highlight the language, and I guess I don't know what the next steps would be around that.
I, um, I guess I'm a little confused as to what you mean by supporting the parents, like as opposed to the teachers or?
In general, I think as a public, uh, the parents aren't being heard at the public school level, so they're coming to, they're reaching out to me as councilperson as an arena to, to ha- have them heard on what schools are doing, uh, in the school district. Um, so my support is for the parents, um, and what the parents are trying to accomplish for their kids' schools.
I, I, I'm kinda, I don't feel like this is ours. I think like, we could personally support the parents and have our own opinions, but I don't feel like it's our role to do this.
Now, I, I would, you know, I'm all for parents being heard at the school district. I'd like to give the school district the opportunity to do that. As Council President Pratt says, it's, you know, it's TTSD's business and how they run, um, the schools and how they administer them and the school board ultimately is representatives for the community, interfacing with the administration. And as far as I've been, as long as I've been a city council member and mayor, we really don't dip into each other's business. We'll assist when we need to. We assist by supplying SROs. We come out with the proclamations of support, uh, on a general, in a general nature, you know, against violence in our schools and violence, uh, and making sure that the schools are violence-free, but as far as getting into specifics with the school district and their policies, we usually defer the, to them, uh, because I know we'd be kind of infuriated if they got involved in something with us. Um, and try to, uh, dabble, if you will, in something that's, you know, that we have jurisdiction over versus them. That's my opinion. Council Hillier's lights on.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I guess I, I have spoken to a lot of people in our community over the last several weeks. And, um, I think it's very dangerous to say support the parents because they're, not every parent has the same opinion. And so I think that is a, number one, a very dangerous statement to make that I'm not prepared to make. Number two, I feel like this whole process is politicizing and weaponizing our children, and I will absolutely have and, um, number three, I do think that it's important that we stay in our lane and the school district stays in their lane, because I think that creates, you know, they say, what is the saying about strong fences make good neighbors or whatever? And, and I feel something like that. I don't know. Um, but I feel very strongly about that. And, and I do not feel like further, um, taking sides or doing things like that is helpful for our community. Our community is being torn up right now. And there's already too many sides, and I think that, that, um, is, is not what I'm about and not what I'm interested in, in voting for.
So I want to first say that I acknowledge that this council has no jurisdiction over the school district. But we do serve the same constituents, and Tuolumne is getting a really bad rap because of the schools can't get it together. So you're absolutely right. We don't want to pin the school against the parents, but we are here to provide support to families, parents, and they just have to be heard. There isn't anything that we're doing or taking action other than acknowledging the public record that we hear you. So if I hear you correctly, it's a no for you in supporting this proclamation. Okay? Thank you. But that's what, that's what I wanted to say, that I'm, I'm in support of the parents. And I hear you out there, and we'll do what we can just to, just to hear them. That's all. There's nothing that we need to do.
I, I agree with you.
Nothing.
You know, tonight, tonight's a big night for them. They have their meeting tonight. Um, and I, I would defer to them on, they're gonna hear from the, you know, the parents who attend on Zoom. And I'm sure they're gonna be taking some kind of actions, because, um, there's some things they did right. Uh, some people said they did, they have some things that were mishandled. And retro, you know, in looking back, they're gonna realize what they messed up and fix that policy. I have all faith that they'll do that. I know the school board members are very committed. Uh, Dr. Sue has been, uh, a super person. I know there's a lot of different opinions on that, but she's been a very staunch advocate for the, for the district and where I see the support we can do is especially when we have interactions with school board members. And Dr. Sue would just chat with them and relay those messages you're hearing, um, to them and, you know, follow up with them and see, because I'm certainly gonna see here and, uh, tomorrow, we're gonna all hear what, you know, happened tonight and what measures and steps the district will take. And if it's something where we feel the parents aren't being helped, you know, listened to, I have no problem talking to a school board member or Dr. Sue about it. I just won't put it in a proclamation. I'll do it offline, informally, as mayor to schools, in separate schools superintendent. And you all, I mean, Dr. Sue would listen to all of you. And so would the school board members. Let's do that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I want it just to be heard, and I want the parents to know that I hear you out there. And that's hopefully we can all come together to get this resolved. Thank you.
Any others, council communications, Council Pratt? Oh, Council Brooks and Council President Pratt?
Um, I, first of all, I want to thank, um, Maria, uh, Council Reyes for, um, discussing the community warehouse when I uh, practice social work. I, um, there's people, young moms and a lot of folks that get their whole apartments taken care of. And when we have this homeless issue that we have in our community, it really helps people get a head start when they're able to get furniture in their place. Um, as far as the previous comments around parents and students, um, it sounds to me like there's a meeting where people are being heard, so I think that people are being heard. Um, and I hope that, that our community goes through healing, and I'm really grateful to our police chief and our, um, the things that we do here at council to support good outcomes, um, and our leadership around our SROs and, um, and that's what our, in my mind, our purview is. Or something else that's very far afield from, um, this council's duty. Um, I just want to acknowledge, um, the, the pain that a lot of people in our community, especially our Jewish community right now, are dealing with, with the violence, um, overseas. And just let people know that we stand with them, that they're in our thoughts and prayers, that a lot of things that are going on right now are just horrible, and that it puts stress on many of us, um, even though it's far away and that this council doesn't have any real, um, power over that, but, um, you know, but, but all, all of that, we're together where that's worrisome and, and hurts our hearts and, and worries our minds. So I just want to acknowledge that. And, um, thank our veterans again for coming out today and look forward to the veterans breakfast. Thanks.
President Pratt?
Well, I have to promote the TUCPF duck raffle, which happens at the pumpkin regatta. So for ten dollars for one or a hundred dollars for eleven, you can buy a little, a little rubber duck, not that guy. But, um, and then they'll go in a big, big inflatable rubber duck. And then there's one of the giant pumpkin races, the, um, police officers and firefighters and community members go out there and the first five back win, the top prize is seven hundred dollars. It goes down from there and the bottom prize is you can win one of both, both these guys. And if that doesn't interest you, you can buy him for twenty, him, Tony for twenty, Onyx for twenty, and our newest is a rubber ducky for ten dollars. Oh, this is Officer R. Ducky, by the way, his name. And, um, so you could go to tucpf.org or if you go on the, um, city's website, it's under police. Thanks.
Uh, the only thing I have, just again, a reminder about Saturday Vine to Wine, mentioned it before, at the Twolton Library this Saturday from seven to ten. You can get tickets at the library at the desk for cash and check, or if you want to pay by charge card, go to the foundation's website. Um, it's a fun event. I think there's six wineries, one, uh, canned cocktail company, uh, food, music. It's usually a very good time and encourage people to attend. Anything else? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second?
I have a motion and a couple of seconds to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Good evening. Have a safe evening. Good night.